People who haven't already met him, Chris Berry, who's the new interim head of planning. And for all of the area committees, Chris is joining the chairman, the vice chairman on the platform. Okay, so I'll move to item one. Can the committee confirm the minutes of the meeting held on 10th of July 2019?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Amy, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Gray and councillor Reed.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, Amy, are there any declarations of interest?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Henry has declared a non-percoony interest in item A2 as a member of Uherst Parish Council.
And councillor Townsend.
Can I declare an interest in item 7.3 and I will be leaving the room for that item and then we'll return afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, are there any questions from members of the public?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Any questions from members?
Also none received, Chairman.
Item six, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation? And Patrick, you will speak on this.
Yes. There's been recently an update to the Planning Practice Guidance in relation to Habitat Regulations. In essence, this consolidates the guidance in relation to the Sweetman ruling. And I think it's important to note that Waverley has already updated its approach in line with the guidance. So there's no overall change to the approach that we are taking in relation to habitats. There'll be a briefing on it as well, and to members in relation to Habitat Regulations as well.
And they don't affect the applications before us this evening? Applications rising for this meeting. So just as normal, in the event of site inspections becoming necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday the 15th of October, at a time to be agreed with at the meeting. So I'll move on to the applications. Now, before I say that, you will notice there's a change of format of the reports. And Chris will be very interested to hear your comments afterwards as to whether you think they're a good or bad idea. Good idea, I hope. Also, in terms of keeping to time, as you will know, we have another meeting, or at least some of us have another meeting coming up directly after this. So if you keep your remarks as short as possible, and to the point, that would help. And we'll keep, of course, the normal timings. So item 7.2, item A1, land at Horsham Road Cranly. And so this proposal is for erection of dwelling associated works following demolition of existing buildings. So Laura, can you please present the application?
Thank you, Chair. The application is at land coordinates at Horsham Road. It's for the erection of a dwelling and associated works. There's been one verbal update, which shows the additional proposed north-east and north-west elevation, and one verbal update where Thames Ward has suggested an informative relating to minimum pressure. The slide behind me shows the location plan. The site is outlined in red. Access to the site is demonstrated from the Horsham Road and the area is residential in character. This slide shows the two block plans. On the left-hand side is the existing block plan, and on the right-hand side shows the positioning of the proposed dwelling. The separation distances between the neighbouring dwellings are demonstrated on this plan. This slide shows the wider site, which is lined by TPO trees on the north-eastern edge of the site. The trees circled in red are to be removed and the trees circled in yellow are to be pruned. This slide shows two photographs of the site. The one on the left-hand side is the elevation of six Ellery Close and on the right-hand side is five Ellery Close. This slide shows on the left-hand side access to the site from the Horsham Road, and the other photograph shows the view from Ellery Close. These show the proposed elevations. The north-east shows the front elevation as viewed from the Horsham Road. The north-west elevation faces five Ellery Close. These two proposed elevations, the top one shows the rear, which would face six Ellery Close, and the bottom one is the side elevation, which would face the TPO trees numbers one and two. These are the proposed floor plans. It would be a three-bedroom at first-floor level and provide an open-plan living area at ground-floor level. The application is recommended for approval as set out in the officer's report. The determinant issues are the impact on residential amenity and the design and impact on visual amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the next step is for public speaking. There's one person down to speak, who's Megan, right, Megan Rowe, the agent. Is Megan Rowe here? Right, do you want to come forward to speak? So there's the one with the microphone stand up. Okay, and you have four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me time to speak to the committee this evening. The application site has been in my client's family for decades and has most recently been used for the storage of building materials. In the past, it formed part of the garden to High Park Cottage, but the two have been severed and are now in different ownerships. My client now wishes to put the land to use and build himself a family home. You will see that your officers have recommended approval because the site is within the settlement boundary whereby the principle of development is acceptable, subject to visual and residential amenity considerations, which your officers have concluded are acceptable. The proposed dwelling would have a traditional form and would sit within the line of houses on Ellery Close and would reflect the grain of development within the immediate area. The roof form and height proposed is comparable to the surrounding dwellings and, at four metres, the space around the dwelling is more generous than the existing side-to-side relationships in Ellery Close. The site is screened by a number of large and attractive trees, which are protected by a TPO. These trees soften the appearance of the dwelling and retain a verdant feel to the street scene. All of these factors would prevent cramped overdevelopment appearance. The distances between the buildings are sufficient to minimise overshadowing and loss of light for neighbours. This view is supported by your officers. The privacy of the properties on Ellery Close would be maintained. The only facing windows would be bathrooms, which would be obscurely glazed, and there is a condition to ensure this. The separation distances to the properties on Horsham Road and the intervening trees are sufficient to ensure that the facing windows would not cause a material loss of privacy. Overall, therefore, there is no concern relating to the loss of neighbouring amenity. The site is within flood zone one, where the risk of flooding is at its lowest. According to the Environment Agency's mapping, the application site is not an area that is at risk from surface water flooding. The area around the dwelling will be used as a garden. This will predominantly involve soft landscaping to allow the site to percolate surface water. Surface water drainage, therefore, has been adequately dealt with. The site plan accurately identifies the protected trees on the site and shows that they will be sufficiently far from the dwelling to ensure their retention and allow both the property and garden to benefit from sufficient light. Services and associated ducts will be installed using impact mauling, and we have demonstrated that this will not impact on the root protection areas. Your tree officer is satisfied that suitably worded conditions will ensure the ongoing protection of the trees during the construction period. Adequate levels of off-street parking are proposed, and the Highway Authority has raised no objection in relation to highway safety where the existing access meets Horsham Road. Furthermore, the relevant permissions for sewer connections will be sought in the normal way from the utility company and is not a material planning consideration for tonight. Overall, we have demonstrated that the proposal complies with both the MPPF and the relevant local plan policies. It makes the best use of land within the settlement area and would contribute towards the council's housing land supply. For these reasons, and in the opinion of your officers, permission should be granted. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay. Councillors wish to speak on this item? Councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. I have read through all of the detailed objections received from residents and neighbours in the area that are recorded on the Waverley website. And although unfortunately I wasn't able to attend the site visit, I have actually been to the area this week to have a close look. I do have a number of reservations, quite strong reservations actually regarding this application, and consider that the proposal would constitute an overdevelopment and cramped inappropriate backland development of the site that would be out of keeping with the existing and well-established properties in the immediate vicinity of Ellery Close. Personally, I see this as shoehorning in another property into a small site, which I believe would result in a loss of amenity and the opportunity to enjoy the homes of a number of residents, excuse me, but in particular for the residents of number five and number six Ellery Close. I also have concerns about the trees. I've lived in Cranly for close on 50 years now, and this particular band of trees is much admired and loved by residents. Despite the TPOs on trees in the area, I note with regret that the tree officers already recognise that there will most probably be applications in the foreseeable future for further work to trees to enable more light to the front of the proposed property. The planning application acknowledges that one oak tree and one yew tree will be felled to enable this to go ahead, and three trees will be pruned. I have further concerns relating to the access drive to the proposed new property from the Horsham Road, which in my estimation is far too narrow and would not allow access for an emergency vehicle and is far too close to the existing properties on either side that would have a significant impact on the amenity value of these properties, in particular to the residents of High Park Cottage. Unfortunately, despite the speed limit, it is well-known locally that cars regularly speed on this section of the Horsham Road, and the access and egress from this narrow drive is at a difficult section of the Horsham Road where visibility is restricted. A significant number of objections relating to a number of issues have been received from residents in the area, including objections from the Cranly Parish Council. I do feel very strongly that these objections together recognise a number of appropriate reasons of the inadvisability of giving permission for this application, and I am strongly minded to reject it. But I will, of course, wait for comments from my fellow councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend?
Thank you, Chairman. I have about three points to make. First of all, I would like to inquire why a bat survey has not been done on the application. The letter from National England confirmed that, in their response, that they hadn't assessed the application site for protected species. And although an appraisal was done, this is not a survey. On our own biodiversity checklist that we put in, it says if there are answers in the positive to sections one or two in our biodiversity checklist, which there are against this application, which could affect bat roosting, then it should be that a bat survey is carried out at the appropriate time of year in suitable weather conditions and using recognised methodologies. So I would like to know why a bat survey hasn't been carried out. Last night in the Dockenfield application for the Western Planning Committee, it was particularly said that it was essential the presence of protected species was established at the point the decision was made. It's been made that we recognise that the presence of bats could be at this site, but no actual surveys have been carried out. And I think it's important, under the Habitat Regulations, and also this council's forthcoming commitment to potential climate emergency when we're looking at extinction of species, that we are actually looking to use planning legislation to ensure that protected species are actually protected. And we need to have a consistent approach on this matter. So that's my first question to officers, is about the bat survey. I have to agree with councillor Ellis about the trees. This band of trees used to form a band across the whole of the Horsham Road, and it has been undermined by recent developments and has become now a small mosaic of trees along the back of the Horsham Road. This is one of the last bits of that, which was actually connected to the ancient woodland originally, the last little band of trees going down the Horsham Road. And the tree officer admits, as councillor Ellis has stated, that there will have to be probably thinning out of these trees and that it will make the development far more visible, which will affect residential amenity to other properties around there. My final point is actually about the property itself. It's not visible from the Horsham Road, that's clear, but it will be very visible from Ellery Close. And I would refer to the recent appeal decision on 15 Cronwall Lane Farnham, which was a similar thing, where they were trying to locate attached dwelling from a close where the garden boundaries faced a different road. And we have the same thing here. The properties face the Horsham Road, but the actual property will be introduced within a close setting. And this is where all the properties face the road. The insertion of this side frontage is inconsistent with the character of the aerial and will definitely have a negative effect on the impact of that local character area, similar to, as I say, the Cronwall Lane decision. As has been referred to previously, there are actually 27 letters of objection. Some of them are duplicates from residents, but there is strong feeling about the impact on residential amenity that this particular property will have. One of the actual points, which I found particularly pertinent, was said that it would be considered an incongruous design when viewed from the street scene in Ellery Close due to its relationship to neighbouring properties and how the facing elevations address Ellery Close. So I have to agree with the impact on neighbouring amenity. I do feel that it will have an impact and it will be incongruous design. Thank you.
Thank you. There were a couple of points there. Trees were also mentioned by councillor Ellis, and of course the bat survey. Laura, do you want to comment on those points?
Thank you, Chair. In relation to bats, there was a preliminary ecology appraisal was submitted with the application date undertaken by David Archer Associates, dated July 2018. Within this survey, one of the species surveyed was the bats. And it looked at the trees, it looked at the temporary storage facilities on the site, and all were identified as having negligible or very low potential for bat roost contained within it. Those surveys were assessed by Surrey Wildlife Trust, and they raised no objection to it subject to necessary conditions which have been applied to the application. So contrary to the application last night, this had a preliminary bat roost survey undertaken to it, and that was identified as low. Clearly, the condition sets out the need to take preliminary surveys prior to any construction works taking place on the site. And if any bats are found, then appropriate mitigation can be put in place in accordance with the regulations. In relation to the trees, as members saw when we arrived, the two trees to be removed within the TPO grouping, they aren't TPO'd in their own right, because they never would be, because they're of very poor quality. One is a rather battered yew and the other is an oak. And whilst officers certainly wouldn't recommend the removal of trees ordinarily, I think members would agree that these aren't of a particularly prime species. Also, this grouping of trees hasn't enjoyed any particular husbandry to ensure that their longevity is guaranteed. Any future works to those trees will be subject to the usual assessment by the council's arboretural officer, obviously with the key objective of, one, the retention of the trees, and, two, to prolong their life. If any of those trees were to be lost, I would assume that the officer would recommend an appropriate replacement species of those trees. The third point you raised, councillor Townsend, is really in relation to the impact of the proposed development on the grouping of buildings in Ellery Close in that cul-de-sac. There is really very limited impact of the proposed building on the Horsham Road frontage as a setback. When we undertake a planning assessment, the two primary issues that we would look at are issues of overlooking, to ensure that the privacy of the adjoining properties is safeguarded and with the orientation of the windows, there isn't an issue of overlooking that would arise. The other one would be the issue of the impact in daylight and sunlight. Appropriate assessment has been undertaken, and this will not arise. The other assessment really is about whether or not this proposed development and its location is overbearing on the context of the setting of that cul-de-sac. And there will be a view of the corner of the building from the close. The planner's observation is that impact will be a reasonable one and won't impact to a detrimental sense of the overbearing on the adjoining properties. And it's for those reasons that the recommendation for approval has come forward.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Goodridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought the site visit was very helpful earlier in the week. And I note what the local members' views are and also the letters of objection. If I could deal with the trees first, having looked at the two trees that are to be felled, they are very inferior trees that have clearly sown themselves at some stage and are pretty small, insignificant, and I'm quite happy that they would be removed. And also, I could see, too, that some of the trees have been neglected for a long time and a bit of judicial tree work on them would probably be to the trees' benefit. The other point which I found very helpful in the site visit was going to Ellery Close and seeing where this house would be and from the site to look at the two houses in Ellery Close that would be facing the site. And as I understand it, the height of the proposed building and the height of the houses in Ellery Close that are either side are of a very similar height. And having assessed and looked at the plan, particularly on page 16, and having looked at the site, I have to say that I think firstly the site is quite large enough, despite the trees, to take this property. And I also feel that the view from Ellery Close is perfectly acceptable and would not make a very large impact in that close. And I think has been sensitively designed so as to cause minimum impact. Therefore, as I feel at the moment, I am minded to follow the officer's recommendation.
I'll come back to councillor Ellis after anybody else wishes to speak. So councillor Deane?
Thank you, Chair. Just going to page 19, and this is a bit of a clarification on our policy. At the top, it talks about the proposed dwelling position 4.1 metres to the north-east of the boundary. And I just wondered what the distance is between that and those two properties, number five and number six, is? Because looking at the map, the one on number six, if that's 4.1 metre to the boundary, then the property's fairly close. So how far is that between actual building and building? And what is our policy on distances for that? I thought we had set out specific distances that houses should be. Thank you.
In terms of minimum distances between an existing property and a proposed new property, my understanding is that we don't have an SPD that specifically sets out. I think we would have, well, I think, is it a metre? Yeah, it's a metre. So generally, two-storey side extensions, if there's a side extension, not come within one metre of the boundary. So the same principle could apply here. So it's one metre, so this is four metres. But again, the key factor is that you would seek to protect the amenity of existing properties, and those amenities would be issues of overlooking, loss of daylight, sunlight, and whether or not it would be considered overbearing by its proximity to those individual properties.
Okay, I'll come back to councillor Townsend after this has spoken. Is anybody else in the council we should speak on this? Okay, councillor Ellis, do you want to come back on some particular point?
Thank you for allowing me to come back. I just wanted to make an observation about the trees, going back to the trees. I do find it very unusual and actually quite sad that the officers accept that there will most probably be applications for works in the future, the foreseeable future is what we say, for work to the trees that have got TPOs on them. Thank you.
I think councillor, as councillor Goodridge said, it's unlikely they've had much work in the past. So I think we have to expect that TPO trees will have applications for works on some regular basis. Councillor Ellis, you want to make a point? I'm sorry, councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the point, I'd like to elaborate just slightly on that, is that it's not that they need work doing. Specifically, the tree officer has actually said that there will be future pressure on the tree stock in order to improve light into the front of the new dwelling. And I think that is the point. It's nothing to do with the health of the tree. It's actually specifically saying that it will be required because it will be very dark in this new dwelling. Also, I don't think at any stage myself or councillor Ellis were commenting on the removal of the two trees. Because I did go on the site visit, and the trees are probably of low value. However, it is actually the thinning out and the work on these existing trees. And my second point is that our extensions supplementary planning document, I think, says that there should be a distance of at least 21 metres between proposed windows and those of neighbouring properties, and 18 metres between proposed windows and neighbouring private amenity space. And I just want to know if that is the case here. Thank you.
Patrick, do you want to handle that?
Do you want to go on distance? Okay, Laura's going to go on distance this way.
So if you go to page 18 of the report, it goes through five Ellery Close and six Ellery Close. So the distance between the main flank elevations of the proposed dwelling to the shared boundary line is four metres. Number five Ellery Close has an attached garage. So on the first paragraph, as the garage is angled, the actual main flank elevation of the house would be positioned 2.4 metres away from the boundary, but as the actual attached garage is attached to that boundary. So the elevation of the garage would be four metres from the flank elevation of the proposed dwelling. Then there'd be an additional, the width of the garage to the main elevation of five Ellery Close. If you move on to six Ellery Close, there's a four-metre separation distance between the rear elevation of the proposed dwelling and then a further 1.1 metres between the flank elevation of number six Ellery Close.
Also, just to clarify the issue on trees, I mean, the application before us has set out the works that are anticipated as part of the application. Any future works, we can't take into account as part of this application determination. But what I can say is that obviously they will be subject to the usual rigour. But what I can say is that obviously they will be subject to the usual rigor of our tree officer, whose objective will be to protect that grouping of TPO trees. So I just want to give some assurance that that would be the longer-term objective. Do you want to comment on SPD?
Thank you. Yes, you're correct, the SPD does refer to a distance of 21 metres, back-to-back distance. However, in this case, due to the position of the properties, it's quite difficult to apply that directly because it's not a direct relationship.
Can I just come back on that?
If you briefly please.
Well, I would say that is a moot point, the fact that this is a back, that is the back, and that is the back of the property. It's, you know, to say that we are going to just chuck away our general, it says re-overlooking that as a general rule, there should be a distance, these distance. And I've asked, what is the distance? Not what the distance is to the boundary, but the overall distance from the proposed windows and those of neighbouring properties. And that's the question that I would like answered. And I think it's a very moot point to say that it's a back-to-back distance because that is the back of the house.
Just to clarify, that the guidance relates specifically to a distance between window to window. And to clarify, there aren't any windows on the first elevation, first floor elevation overlooking those properties. So those distances don't apply because they're window to window, and that's why specifically there aren't any windows on the first floor at those points. So there isn't any overlooking.
Okay, councillors, we've heard the, yes, no one else wishes to speak. So we've considered the application, so I think we'll move to the vote. So the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 23 and informatives 1 to 8, permission be granted. All those, I'm sorry, there's also a Thames Water informative to be added to that. So all those in favour of the recommendation?
That's six, Chairman.
Those against?
That's four, Chairman.
Any abstentions?
One, Chairman.
Okay. There you go. Okay, we move to item A2, Lehman's Barn Farm, Wickhurst Lane, construction of an extension to the access track. So Alex.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, members. Just before I begin, there is a very brief verbal update to this application, which I'll just run through for you. And that is that there has been an additional neighbour response received following the publishing of the agenda from a landowner of a section of Wickhurst Lane, which I'll point out the areas of that once the plans are on the screen. This application, so just reminds, does propose an extension from an existing access track which adjoins Wickhurst Lane. The red line does not adjoin Wickhurst Lane, and so no new access is proposed. We also have an additional condition and informative that are proposed to ensure no vegetation clearance is to be undertaken during the bird nesting season and that materials are not stored or burnt within or adjacent to Site of Nature Conservation importance. This slide shows the location plan. The extension to the track will lead from an existing gate off a privately owned track, which is shown within the blue line here. Wickhurst Lane adjoins this track at the far north of the plan here. This aerial photograph shows the site within the field where the track would run. These site photographs show the existing situation. This proposed block plan shows the location of the proposed track extension. Track would measure approximately 230 metres from the point here to the southern boundary, down to here, with a 75-metre fork up to the holiday lets at the top here. So gravel surfacing is proposed for the track with timber post and rail fencing at 1.5 metres running along either side. It should be noted that there is a public footpath that runs along the southern boundary of this site. The determining issues for this application are the impact on the green belt, the impact on the visual amenity, the AOMB and the AGLV, impact on residential amenity, on highway safety, and on public footpaths. Based on the assessment in the officer's report, recommendation is for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Three speakers. First one is Bruce Walker. Okay, now you've got four minutes. Yes. Is the button, you should go, that's it.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here this evening to represent all of the neighbours' residents, all of the nearest residents who objected to this application. They are Wickhurst Lodge, Stone House, High Wickhurst, Plum's Acre, Penquide Farm, High Wickhurst East Wing, Woodlands Cottage, and High Wickhurst End. It should be noted that all bar one of the closest residents will be impacted by this track extension and have objected to it. I think the remaining residents at High Cops made a good start at explaining how they felt and their conflict of interest in their letter. Additionally, it should be noted that the owners of the majority of Wickhurst Lane and the parish council have also objected. We want to reinforce some of what has already collectively been put in writing. Wickhurst Lane is a privately owned and privately maintained single-track road. It's also a public footpath. It has very limited passing spaces, blind bends, and undulations, and is unsuited to further increases in traffic volume. Latterly, much more traffic is evident, for example, from delivery vans, and there have been some minor accidents and a number of near misses. There is a variety, a wide variety of users of the lane. These include dog walkers, hikers, cyclists, children doing Duke of Edinburgh, and children at the residential outdoor centre at Sayers Croft. More traffic from unknowledgeable drivers is not a good idea. The track itself down towards Penquide Farm is even less suitable for increased traffic. It is currently used solely by Penquide Farm, is in poor state of repair, also has blind bends, and is hemmed in by a steep bank with a drainage ditch on one side and a drainage ditch on the other. There are no passing spaces, and we cannot see how they can be accommodated without encroaching on other residents' properties. Emergency vehicles struggle to negotiate it now, and any blockages of access could be serious. Access from the track onto Wickhurst Lane itself has limited vision, and I'd refer you to the objection letter from High Wickhurst End, which gave a detailed analysis of reaction times and stopping distances. Not comfortable reading for residents giving any increase in traffic. We do have a very real concern that linking this track through to Lehman's Barnes, excuse me, and then on to Buckhurst Road will potentially encourage traffic to attempt to use it as a cut-through to bypass the village. Moving on to the access point from Lehman's to Buckhurst Road, this was created fairly recently, and it was the residents' understanding that increased traffic from the holiday lets, stables etc., would also use that access point when planning permission for the lets was given. It is not currently used. The effect of this would reduce traffic on Wickhurst Lane and therefore could be supported. It also means that there are already two access points for the whole property, and we're at a loss to understand why this has not been used and why three access points are required unless this is part of a slow progression towards greater development. It appears that a number of small steps in planning terms over time are beginning to produce a much bigger development of the plot. There will also be the consequence impact on wildlife and natural habitat in the area. Finally, we do believe that there will be a bigger pool of objectors if notification and publication of this application had been as expected. Previous application notices did not reach all neighbours and were not placed in a prominent position. For this application, public notices were only apparent for a very short period of time and then disappeared. Affected residents did not all receive notice, and advice of this evening's meeting was only received sporadically by those who objected. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker was Dan, being Ian Davis from US Parish Council, but not clear that he's here. No, Ian Davis. No. Okay. Okay, so we move to Barry, Barry Davis, agent.
Thank you, sir. I'm here this evening, my name is Barry Davis, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Ben Kirk, who's the agent for the application, and he sends his apologies that he can't be here this evening. First of all, I would like to thank the planning officer of the council and the committee for granting the planning permission historically for the self-catering holiday accommodation, which has been enormously helpful at Lehman's Farm, and also by the creation of employment for two additional jobs. The planning officer has, in my view, considered the application carefully under the development plan, an up-to-date development plan, 2018, very much up-to-date in accordance with the national planning policy framework, and has decided that, and has resulted in that there are no other material considerations that would outweigh the development plan being considered for approval. It's a material consideration that this existing access actually does exist, and it's an extension that is being applied for here, not for a new access. And from safety aspect, for the visitors to the holiday accommodation, is of extreme importance. I've listened very carefully to Mr. Walker in relation to highways aspect, and I would draw the committee's attention to the county council, Surrey County Council's highways consultation, which is a statutory consultation, which confirms that after undertaking an assessment, they're satisfied there is no material impact on the public safety and the operation of the adjoining public highway, and therefore they have no objection whatsoever. I've also listened very carefully in relation to wildlife and habitat, and Surrey Wildlife Trust, Cheryl Brunton, conservation officer in planning, has in her statutory consultation confirmed that she has no objection in that regard. The site is in a remote part of AOMB. Clive Smith, who's a planning officer for Surrey County Council, has been consulted, and he has indicated that he has no objections. I would make one point, Mr. Chairman, that in relation to the conditions, there is actually a condition, quite rightly in my view, condition four, a construction environmental management plan should be applied, and that is an extremely important condition which would protect any position regarding ecology and the environment on that aspect. I think that covers highway and the wildlife trust very much so, and the officer's recommendation, therefore, is that the planning report should be, the planning application should be approved, as it is in accordance with the development plan, and subject to the conditions. And I would respectfully ask the committee to endorse that recommendation, please. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from councillors? Councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair. Considering this application is within a remote part of Waverley, and for those councillors that actually came out on the site visit, I think they will agree with that. It is a remote part of Waverley. It has attracted quite a deal of attention, hence my reason for calling it in. And the importance of the landscape is the very heart of this application. The officer's report gives the impression that the Surrey Hills ANOB planning officer had no great objection to this application, and you can see a note of that on page 40. The Surrey Hills planning officer did visit, and he wrote what I consider to be an informative report on his findings, much of which has been edited out of the synopsis. His concerns were proposals seem to be unfortunate consequences of planning permissions granted for holiday lets, including the construction of a new building. And he goes on to say, "I have no record of having been consulted on these applications. I find that worrying." Further development incursions into the ANOB should be avoided until unless other material planning considerations outweigh the degree of any harm. Any environmental benefits being a possible material planning consideration arising from this proposal would need to be weighed in the balance." And he says, "I am not sure there are any here." My concerns, and those of the parish council and the local residents, is to echo that of the Surrey Hills planning advisor. We know the area well, we live in it, we have our being in it, we know it very well. There has been some sporadic development, including that currently built at Lehman's Farm, and there have been several planning applications on this site which seem to have been a step-by-step approach to achieving a significant total of development in this nationally protected landscape. This application is a further incremental step, and the planning authority, that's you people, should take a cautious approach in deciding whether the proposed access resulted in visual incursion and activity into the ANOB is justified. Permission has already been granted to improve the access at Buckhurst Road off the Swallowhurst roundabout, which possibly has an environmental advantages over the proposed use of Wickhurst Lane, which is a private road, and the rough track to Wickhurst cottages. The further access proposed here is, I consider, unnecessary. This access would allow the equestrian users to be separately served to the holiday lets, and you can see this from page 38. And as from the plan, you can see there's quite a lot of new curtilage included in this application. So it's not just the track, you've got the curtilage as well. And the achievement of a separate access would encourage the subdivision of the planning application to lift the holiday let restriction on the dwellings on the grounds that the holiday lets are unviable. This must be resisted. The proposed access will be harmful to the setting of the footpath which runs alongside its route. This public footpath is very popular with hundreds of weekly visitors that attend Sayers Croft Rural Centre in Uherst, and it would encourage traffic to be introduced into this otherwise peaceful setting, resulting in harm to the AOMB. In summary, the proposal does not meet the test of giving sufficient weight to conserve the landscape, the green belt, and the scenic beauty of the AOB. It conflicts with NPPF, the local plan, and the Surrey Hills AOMB management policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Going on the site visit was exceedingly useful, and it was, I ended up with one of those, heart says no, head says yes, because the officer has put together a good report on this. But having listened to the two speakers, I guess what I would say about the report is it's good as far as it goes. But as we were walking along, we did raise the comment that because it's a private road, there has actually not been a proper highways assessment. The fact that it's a private road, if it was a public road, Surrey would be consulted. It's still a road, it still has cars on it, there has been no consultation as to the safety. And the first speaker raised very correctly that Wickhurst Lane in itself isn't a great pleasure to drive down, and the stretch between Wickhurst Lane and pleasure to drive down, and the stretch between Wykhurst Lane and the start of the requested new stretch of of access is is not at all suitable for, as was pointed out, not at all suitable for people who don't know the area to drive down. So in the absence of a proper highways assessment as to whether that is safe or not, I am actually struggling to support this, because in my opinion, I would derive no pleasure at all being a stranger and being invited to drive down that stretch when there is alternative access, which is still not particularly wonderful, but is significantly better than what is being proposed here. So I think that's the prime concern. I don't particularly like this access, but as has been pointed out, it is actually a piece of engineering work, and we're really only worrying about the fencing that's going to go around it, the rest of it they're actually entitled to have. But that access issue and the absence of a proper highways assessment as to its safety really does concern me. Thank you, Chair.
There's an officer want to comment on that. I'm just wondering how we carry out a highways assessment when the it's outside the jurisdiction of Surrey, Surrey highways?
Difficult. It's difficult to undertake a full highways assessment on a private road. I think it is important to note that the applicant has the right to use the existing road. Indeed, they do use the existing road, and they do drive across the field at the minute at certain points of the year. So, and not to my knowledge has anyone raised the fact that there has been an accident arising from that particular operation. So it leaves the planning authority in a position where we have to take a sort of a reasoned approach to 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 the impact, and I think it's reasonable to say that we don't think that the impact and the volume of traffic that is anticipated would be such that a particular issue in relation to the highways is likely, in all likelihood, to arise, and that's sort of set out, and that's the reasoning behind the findings in the officer's report.
That is question. You mentioned that there was an possible entitlement to build this path anyway, and as an engineering operation. What does the application give that that is additional to the rights that already
It's it's really just a formalization of that arrangement and that and that access point. They could use it for agricultural use without the benefit of of planning consent. It's just really a formalization of the route.
Yeah, thank you. councillor Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, I'm very sympathetic with what councillor Seeburn said, and looking, I mean, clearly there's a gate there, that's clear to see from the site visit, but was also clear that as far as I could see, there's no evidence at all of any vehicles having gone through that gate, and there were no tyre marks, there was absolutely nothing on the ground to show that that gate had been used for a long time. Now, I'm told, you know, at certain times of the year it's used. I would have thought the sort of time of the year it would be used would be the summer, rather than the middle of the winter. And if they can use it anyway, are we in effect saying that it is the fencing that's the problem? Because if if it is not a planning matter to put in the actual roadway, the gravel, because it does concern me that, looking from the gate, this accessway is going to be very visible in the in the in the area, and I think would be out of keeping with the area as a whole. Now, if this accessway was urgently needed, that would weigh up, but I'm aware there are lots of other ways to get to the holiday lets. So I'm I'm not totally convinced with the officer's recommendation at this stage.
Sorry, I was waiting for the officers to respond, but there was no response. But, okay, councillor Darcy?
I wanted to ask a couple of questions, as well as make a comment. Reading the sort of green belt NPPF stuff, it suggests that if it's an engineering operation, then it's not inappropriate, but my understanding is an engineering operation needs planning permission. Is that right? Yeah. So does that mean it doesn't need planning permission if it's in the green belt?
It's a commercial context, really. If it's for agricultural use, then it wouldn't, because, I mean, agricultural use is would be would be permitted.
But this isn't?
It is important and it isn't important.
But either or isn't?
It is.
It's not, because it's for access to the letting?
So, yeah, so it's linked to the commercial use, and that's, I guess, that's the reason why it needs planning consent.
Well, it seems to me that the it would scar the landscape and cause visual harm to the countryside, and therefore, under the green belt rules, that wouldn't be acceptable. Is that not correct?
Mr Chairman, my understanding, the way the report's written, is that because openness is not harmed, the very special circumstances test is not engaged, which is why there's no balancing exercise set out in the report. I think that's why the way the officer's written the report.
Yeah. Councillor Darcy, if you turn off your mic, please.
Actually finished, but.
Oh. I just wanted to say. Better conclusion.
As I understand it, then, in the green belt context, it is openness refers to freedom from development. Now, is this or is this not development? To me, it seems like development, because you're building a track, you're making a change, physical change and visual change to the environment. Therefore, it shouldn't be allowed on green belt. I'm finished.
Mr Chairman, I think it's for members to make a determination on whether this is open affects openness or not. If it does, then the very special circumstances test is engaged. If it doesn't, then the officer's report is coherent, and officers would therefore obviously recommend permission.
Okay, councillor Howard?
So, I mean, I think, just to clarify, I think I set out in the officer's report that the test for development is, does it impact on openness? And if it's determined not to impact on openness, which the officer's assessment has indicated, then the exception test doesn't need to be undertaken, and therefore it is deemed acceptable development in the green belt context if it doesn't impact on that openness. So that's the test that's been undertaken, and that's the test that has concluded that it is acceptable.
Could any other speakers, please?
Sorry, Mr Chairman. So follow, therefore, members should make, comes their own view on openness.
Yeah, it's as it's clear, it's a member's judgment about this. So could any other speaker please bear that in mind and just add more to the debate, don't repeat what's been said before. councillor Howard?
Yes, so my question was along those lines, but because it also falls within the area of outstanding natural beauty, which, again, to my understanding, is presumption against development of any kind, and I can't understand why there is any circumstances why you would need that when it is also clearly commercial access to the holiday lets, when there is already two other access, quite acceptable access points. So we're creating artificial engineering in an area of outstanding natural beauty, which, to my understanding, has the same planning protection as a national park?
I think it's probably part of the balance we have to have to strike. councillor Dinas?
Councillor Howard's actually raised a point I was going to raise, so brevity.
Okay. councillor Frochowski?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, this is very interesting, and it's very difficult to come to a conclusion. Where I struggle with this is, given everything that's been said, and there's some very valid points having been raised, if there is an access that's already there that can be used anyway, how will that impact if they decide to start using it now?
I think that they are entitled to apply for this further access. I mean, the question is whether we judge on the balance that it's required or that it's justified. Can we move to a decision on this? I think almost everyone's spoken on this now. Okay. In which case, we have recommendation is it subject to conditions one to four and informatives one to twelve, permission be granted. All those in favour, please show.
That's none, Chairman.
Okay, all those against?
That's nine, Chairman.
Okay, that's a permission has been refused.
I think there's one objection.
Okay. And I think, oh, sorry, excuse me, councillor Frochowski. Okay, so we have to think of reasons we are, I've understood the discussion, reason for refuse.
Proposal.
So a proposal to refuse permission, please. Okay, a second. Thank you. And the reasons, can the?
The reasons, the impact on the openness of the AONB and the Surrey Hills, conserve the landscape and the scenic beauty. Can you put that in a better form than I've just spilt out? Green belt, yeah. And that, yeah, no special circumstances.
I think it's reasonable to recommend refusal on two grounds. At first being unacceptable impact on the green belt and its openness, and the second reason is unacceptable impact on the AONB in accordance with the local plan policy.
Acceptable to the, okay. Do we have to show on that? Okay, in the case, those in favour of the amended motion?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So moving on then, item A three, Land Woodhill Lane, Shamley Green, vision of new access and gates as amended by plans received second of July. Yes, thank you. Okay, Alex, do you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Chairman. So again, as with the previous application, there is a verbal update to this application as well. That is relating to additional neighbour representations that were received following the publishing of the agenda, and that is that there are further objections on biodiversity grounds due to the presence of protected species, including toads. The Surrey Wildlife Trust has been consulted on this application and does raise an objection subject to conditions. So this application is for creation of a new access to the site, Woodhill Lane in Shamley Green. This location plan shows the area of the site to the north of the plot, within the wider blue line. So aerial photo shows, again, the same with the location for the access on this corner These are current site photographs which show the existing hedgerow along Woodhill Lane going around the corner into Madhole Lane. As you can see, the existing pedestrian access gate, and there's an eight metre section of that hedgerow which is proposed to be removed. These second photos show the existing site again, and this is an existing access to the site over which the applicant does have right of way. This is the proposed block plan, again, showing the location of the access to the north of the site. Existing site plan with the pedestrian access shown centrally within the red line. And a proposed site plan, which shows the new access track which will feature gravel surfacing with a timber one point five metre post and rail fence leading from the hedge back eleven metres from the highway to a post and rail fence, gate, sorry. And the existing and the proposed elevations shown off of Woodhill Lane. So determining issues for members are the impacts, again, on the green belt, the impact on the visual amenity, the area of outstanding natural beauty, and the area of great landscape value, the impact on residential amenity, highway safety, and on biodiversity. And as set out within the officer's report, recommendation is for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. One public speaker, Tim Bulley.
I'm speaking to object. For context, for the last twenty five years, this land has been the front garden of Woodhill Farmhouse. In March last year, the garden was sold separately to the house. A property developer bought the land and auctioned, advertised it for auction with subdivided plots showing images of houses implying that the land had planning permission. We believe that several people bought plots and then subsequently lost their deposits when they failed to complete. The land was eventually transferred to today's applicant in September last year, who has stated he intends to build a house. Our first objection is that this application is not for access to an agricultural field, it is for accessing a garden that will establish a residential right of way. Let's be clear, calling it agricultural access is merely a smokescreen. Secondly, the application contravenes policy RD ten, sections A and E. Section A requires that development is necessary. In this instance, it is clearly not necessary, there is already a perfectly good access in place. The planning officer's report states that while a right of way exists over the land, this is onerously restricted. It also states that this is not easily accessible due to onerous onerous security measures. Both of these statements are untrue. Land registry shows that there is already access from Madhole Lane for exactly the purpose requested, and the previous owner used this access for over twenty five years. As for the onerous security measures, access is by a single gate and one padlock for which the applicant has a key. There's nothing stopping him from accessing the land. RD ten, section E, relates to our third objection, which is road safety. Those of you who undertook a site visit will have seen the blind quarter, and you'll have noted that the sightlines in the application are in just fact wrong. The suggestion that the sightlines are a hundred and twenty metres is laughable, really. It's just twenty to thirty metres, well outside the guidelines. Also, the county highway authority stated that accident records data shows that there's been no traffic incidents in the vicinity of the proposed access. This is inaccurate. A search of Department of Transport's database shows that there have been nine collisions in the last fifteen years within two hundred yards of the site, three at the proposed entrance site. This is statistically significant, and it's a well known rat run and danger spot within the local community. On the basis that perfectly good access exists, it seems rather irrational to add further risk. Finally, the development violates policy NE one of the local plan, part one, biodiversity and geological conservation, parts A and B. The site is at the centre of a very large toad migration crossing, which has been clearly documented in the Surrey Reptile Amphibian Group's objection. It may well be the largest in Surrey and is certainly the most significant in Waverley. It even appeared in the Wall Street Journal in twenty thirteen. Toads are listed. Toads are listed as a species of principal importance within the Surrey biodiversity opportunity area policy statement. The site is adjacent to BOA zone WG06, and its position explicitly requires that any development may be required to contribute to the protection, management and enhancement of biodiversity. There is a duty on the council to deliver a net gain in planning decisions and to only permit the adverse impacts of development if unavoidable. This development is completely avoidable. In summary, Waverley has stated that it will resist inappropriate development in the countryside, and special circumstances must exist in order to outweigh harm to the greenbelt. With perfectly good safe access in place, we fail to see how this application can be seen as very special circumstances. It should be refused on the grounds of road safety, protection of local species, and because it's not necessary. Access already exists on Madhole Lane. It's safe, it's why it's there in the first place.
Okay, thank you, Arch. Councillors, any comments to the application? Councillor Howard?
As the local member, this road is very well known to me, and although on the surface it looks as if this is a simple application for a gate to a rural field, it's only when you know the area and when you start to read some of the many objections. I mean, quite extraordinary number of objections, considering there was no advertisement of this application in the local area. I think not enough emphasis has been placed on the letters that have come from people like SARG, the Reptile and Amphibian Group. We're hearing a lot about biodiversity and the number of species that we are losing rapidly in Surrey in a recent publication by Surrey Wildlife Trust. SARG also states in their letter that the decline in common toads, which although the word common, they are not, 68% of them have disappeared in the last 30 years, and as the previous speaker said, that this is probably the most significant site in Waverley, if not Surrey. So I fail to understand why we have not asked for an ecological survey before any planning permission is granted on this site. In fact, SARG say that this isn't, the works that have been proposed here will be, quote, "a death trap to amphibians" because there's going to be work affecting the line of where the watercourses, and that is exactly where all the toads cross in the breeding season. It also says that there's other protected species known on this site, including the smooth and palate newts, and if there is also sightings of the great crested newt here, both in 2017 and 2018. So I feel we cannot grant an application, a planning permission for this site until we have done a full ecological survey of this very important site. Also, as you read on, I had other concerns about facts that perhaps weren't correct, some of which were related to by the previous speaker, but the applicant states that he wants to secure the site for uninvited visitors, while actually he's going to be opening up the site. Actually, I think the site is much more secure as it is already. Then, the site, again, it goes on to the necessity because, again, this is an agricultural field for agricultural purposes, and in living memory, in at least the last 40 years, if not longer, this has been perfectly managed via access via the other gate. Again, when you look at that application to, if this was for agricultural purposes, that is an extraordinary amount of fertile land that you are covering in gravel. So I cannot understand why this is for the purposes of agricultural use. And I cannot see any reason for the valid destruction of a very important wetland site, and that is what you would be doing. Moving on to highways, again, it is a notorious rat run. That area is also known for flooding. It is a known area for wet springs, which is why it's such an amphibian hotspot. So it's also unlimited road, so the speeds of that rat run do get quite high, and they have incorrectly stated the sightlines. So I think that needs to be looked into. So I think we're either minded to defer or vote against this. Also, there was a query about the pull-in side because I believe the recommendations from Surrey County Council are 10 metres, and the current application is only for eight metres.
Can you bring your remarks to the conclusion, please?
Quite a lot. We talked on the previous application about the AOMB and greenbelt impact. I believe there'd be significant impact there. Surrey Wildlife Trust did not say, did not approve, you know, say, there's nothing acceptable about this development. So I don't agree with that. I think on the biodiversity point-
I think you've had to four minutes.
Yes, so I think we need to either reject or defer this for further work.
Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was fairly amazed by the Surrey County Highway Authority's views, because I know this road quite well as well, living in the adjacent village, and I don't know whether the actual county highway officer actually visited or did it on a desktop exercise, but it seems to me, particularly from the objector who has spoken to us, that, and has been endorsed by the local member, that there is some certain information that's incorrect. And I would like to object on highway grounds, but I'm fully aware that if the Surrey Highway Authority say no objection, you are opening a Pandora's box when it comes to an appeal. I do think we could object to it on the impact on greenbelt and area of outstanding natural beauty, because it will have an impact on that area. Although it's, I don't think it's a planning reason, but I'd like comment. I mean, there's no need for this, as has been already said, and I do think that the wildlife that is there needs protecting, and it is significant. It's not, is there an odd toad in the field? I mean, this is their, the M1 of toads across this road, entering, and this is their entrance, and you're going to, in effect, gravel the entrance to the total, the total M1. Therefore, either we defer it for a report on, particularly on the wildlife and the toads, despite the Wildlife Trust putting conditions. I think this is something so important, you can't cover it with conditions, you've got to know the truth before you start. And also, if the highways haven't been, they ought to be, and we ought to question the accuracy of the Highway Authority's information, because it's, having been on the site visit as well, it's blatantly not right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll just turn people's attention to the bottom of page 56 and 57, and I'll read it. "Erection of the gate and fencing would constitute inappropriate greenbelt development, as it would fail to fall with any of the exceptions listed within the MPPF. Very special circumstances would therefore be required to exist outweigh the harm to the greenbelt." Well, I've sat and listened to everything, I've read everything, and I haven't heard one single thing which actually even gives a little bit of a, an exception. Whether it was good exception or not, there hasn't even been any exceptions put forward. So that alone, to me, causes me considerable concern. I agree with my colleague, I'd written it down, I bet they haven't attended, and they've just done a desktop, because we stood there, and how many of us actually felt safe? I didn't. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I think we've had a good debate on this. Are we ready to get, move to conclusion? Okay. So we've got the recommendation, sorry, wrong line, that subject to conditions one to seven and informatives one to five, permission be granted. So all those in favour of that recommendation, please show. All those against?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
And so, with no abstentions, I guess. Okay. So, either proposer for to refuse. Can someone please propose? Councillor Howard, thank you.
Happy to propose refusal of, oh, okay.
And, okay. So, and do you want to suggest the grounds, councillor Howard?
I think, I might need, as the new girl on the block, I might need help here, but obviously encroachment on the impact on the AOMB and greenbelt, impact on biodiversity and all the biodiversity directive, habitat directives, concern over highway safety and flooding. Anything else?
Okay. I think that we, the highway safety, I think we probably should drop because we haven't got support for that. And I, from my point of view, we haven't achieved any of the special circumstances which are, which are required. I think that, to me, that's the key, the key point, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just round it up? As I was saying, there'd be three primary reasons for refuse. One would be unacceptable impact on the greenbelt, unacceptable impact on the AOMB, and unacceptable impact on the ecology that is contrary to the habitat regulations 2017.
Land to north of Northview Plaster Road. It's Plaster, yes. Dunstable. This is Laura, again, yep, thank you. So this is for erection of a dwelling and follows the invalid application 2019-0272.
Thank you, Chair. The application is that land to the north of Northview in Dunstable, so the erection of a dwelling. There is one recent update. Surrey Wildlife Trust comments have been received on the application, which highlight the location plan provided which shows the development at the north-east of the pond, which according to the magic website falls in the ancient woodland boundary. Surrey Wildlife Trust therefore further advise that prior to determination of this planning application, the applicant or their ecologist addresses the concerns and issues raised by the woodland trust and the previous consultation letters that have been received. The location plan is shown on the slide behind me, outlined in red, as you can see the location of the pond in relation to the proposed dwelling. This is an aerial photograph showing the existing dwelling of Northview, the pond and the surrounding woodland. Here are two photographs taken from the council's mapping system. On the left-hand side, there are no layers. On the right-hand side, the green area designates ancient woodland. On the left-hand side here, you can see the block plan showing the distance between the existing building and the proposed dwelling, and then on the right-hand side, you can show that the proposed dwelling is located in the ancient woodland. Here's a photograph of the site, showing the gate which is shown on the block plan, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the pond in the distance. This is where the proposed dwelling would be located, as you can see, on the left-hand side, the small track, and on the right-hand side, the area of wooden thing is where the dwelling is proposed. The proposed elevations are shown on this plan, and it'll be single story in height, a single story, and it'll be height five metres at the ridge. The floor plans propose a two-storey dwelling with a depth of seven metres and a width of 14. The determining issues are impact on the ancient woodland, biodiversity, and whether the application, the proposal would be isolated dwelling in the countryside. As set out in the officer's report, it's recommended for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we have three, three public speakers. The first name is Chris Nat.
Thank you. On behalf of the five objectors against this proposal, we support the officer's recommendation that permission be refused. We agree with their reasons for refusal. This is an unsustainable development outside existing settlement areas. It causes loss of ancient woodland, and it has a negative impact on biodiversity. So you may recall, in November last year, you considered an earlier application for the same log cabin to be sited in another area of ancient woodland at Northview, and at that time, you agreed that such a remote, isolated site was unsuitable for development, and that no exceptional circumstances applied. You agreed that the proposed development would cause a loss of ancient woodland with no benefits that would outweigh its removal, and you concluded that the lack of an ecology survey and the factually incorrect biodiversity checklist submitted meant that the applicant had failed to demonstrate that their proposal wouldn't result in detrimental harm to protected species. And apart from one abstention, every member of this committee on that night voted to refuse that application. Now, the same log cabin is being proposed once again in ancient woodland, and officers are once again recommending its refusal for exactly the same reasons. Nothing has changed. I do not deny that this applicant clearly fulfills an important role within Dunstable Village, but the application fails to explain why this remote location, nearly three miles away from the post office, is the one and only place where this new dwelling could be sited. The officers object in principle that this is an unsustainable dwelling in a remote and isolated location, and that recommendation must be upheld. No exceptional reasons are proposed explaining why this house has to be located in ancient woodland. After all, the applicant is not a rural worker who makes a living from this land. Instead, the applicant's agent simply claims that the proposed dwelling is not in ancient woodland. Well, Waverley planning officers, the woodland trust, Surrey Wildlife Trust are all clear that this is manifestly untrue. So, the application clearly fails to meet local and national planning policies with regards to protected ancient woodland, and instead of carrying out the recommended ecology survey, the applicant's agent simply resubmits the same biodiversity checklist for the fourth time now, with the same factually incorrect information as before, pretending that there are no broadleaf trees on the site, or hedgerows, or ponds within 50 metres of the site, and so on. And so this application makes no more effort to consider the environmental aspects of planning policy than any of the previous three. Now, this application doesn't suggest in itself that the dwelling will be retained as an affordable home in the future or have any conditions attached to it, but in the coming discussions, you may be asked to consider granting this dwelling on condition that it is only used for a village worker. While the woodland trust is clear that no exceptions apply when considering the loss of irreplaceable ancient woodland in planning terms, Surrey Wildlife Trust have been equally clear on three occasions that this land is highly likely to be home to nationally protected species. These experts' views cannot simply be ignored. A condition on ownership does not make these important material planning considerations just go away. Granting this application, even with conditions, would set a precedent to the owner of this land and others to clear more ancient woodland for commercial housing. Planning rules and regulations are there for a purpose, and we believe they should be applied equally to everyone, and for that reason, this proposal must be refused. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Hayward, Dunstable Parish Council. Dunstable Parish Council has noted that the applicant has taken into account concerns raised in the previous applications last year, and we appreciate their endeavours with this. Dunstable Parish Council also acknowledges the substantial contribution that the applicant makes to the community as the village postmistress, as do the many residents who've written letters in support of this application. We accept that this proposal is for a dwelling outside the village settlement and some distance from the village centre, and therefore it's not consistent with the local plan or national planning policy and guidance. The parish council is also concerned- The parish council is also concerned that the application could set a precedent. However, as the next speaker will point out, we also believe that the post office is crucial to the continued existence of the community-owned and run village shop in Dunstable, as well as being a vital local service in itself. There are around a hundred local businesses in the area that make regular use of the post office, so it has an important economic role to play. And if the post office were to close, then there would be a significant increase in traffic in and out of the village, to and from the nearest post office in Cranley. The role of postmistress is a relatively low-paid job. And this self-build offers a low-cost housing solution for a key worker within a distance deemed acceptable by the post office. The post office stipulate that the person running the, the operation has to be able to respond to alarm calls and be at the post office within a set period of time. And this falls within that, within that area. And the proposal will also cost the applicant considerably less than any affordable housing that's currently available in, within the community. Although we realise that planning permission usually runs with the land and is rarely appropriate to provide otherwise, we are aware that in exceptional circumstances, it is possible to grant personal planning permission where development would not normally be justified on planning grounds because of who would benefit from the permission. And we would urge you to consider this because of this special situation. We believe that it should be possible to grant permission personal to the current postmistress or person whose last employment was such, to enable her to stay on there once she retires, with the condition that she could sell it to a successor, postmistress or postmaster. We also think that there could be a further condition, that if that occupancy condition is not met, then the cabin must be removed. We don't believe that this would be an unreasonable request, bearing in mind the nature of the building. It's a modular building which goes up in a matter of days and can be dismantled in a similar manner. So in summary, I just want to say that the applicant, if the applicant's not granted permission, then we believe that we would have to, she would have to move from the area and there would be a subsequent closure of the post office in Dunstable. And because of the vital role played by the post office in, in the Dunstable area, together with the relatively low wage associated with the job, we believe this is a special circumstance which should be a case for a personal planning permission with conditions attached. Thank you.
Okay, final speaker, Karen Thurston.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in support of this planning application in my capacity as chairman of the management committee of Dunstable Village Shop. And I concur with everything that the chairman of the parish council has just said. The applicant, Debbie, within rent space within Dunstable Village Shop, from which she has operated, operated her business as a postmistress for the last eight years. Despite strong and increasing footfall to the post office, the income Debbie receives from her business goes down year on year as payments from Royal Mail per item handled are reduced annually. It may soon become a business she can no longer afford to run or be willing to continue. As the shop's income is very closely linked to the number of people who use the post office and is open for the benefit of all in Dunstable and Haskam and the surrounding area, the impact of losing the post office service would be very significant. In order to keep Debbie as our postmistress, keep the post office open and maintain the viability of the village shop, it is apparent that she needs to find affordable permanent accommodation, truly affordable accommodation, in the form of her own home within the village setting or boundaries. The Dunstable Village Shop is a community-owned business. And with the integral post office is a focal point and community hub for both Dunstable, Haskam and neighbouring rural areas. There is not another post office for some distance, those being in Cranley and Hambledon. The post office at Chillingfold is due to be closed in the near future when a buyer for the premises is found. Banks are also closing, most recently Lloyds in Cranley. And the applicant provides a full banking service at the post office. She is also a community watch officer for the area. The post office is a highly valuable resource, particularly for many of Dunstable's elderly, disabled and unemployed residents, and especially so in these days of declining rural services. The vast majority of Dunstable and Haskam residents who are aware of this planning application sincerely wish that this application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a fairly complex statement about the law which might, well, the case being made for exception here. Could I ask a planning officer to comment on? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. A, a personal permission is possible in particular circumstances where other planning issues are not as significant or more significant. And I think the important issue here, despite the, the presentations made, is that this needs to be determined very specifically on planning grounds which are identified in the report. And how, whatever one's sympathies are, the employment, possible employment and future residents of a particular person, however highly regarded in the community, is not a planning issue for your consideration.
Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sympathetic to the situation of, of the locality wishing to provide accommodation for the postmistress. But I'm afraid, having attended the site visit and having actually seen the other site that was proposed earlier, this is just the wrong place. And the planning situation that exists for ancient woodland and the ecology far outweigh any sympathy I might have for a local postmistress. I mean, it's dense woodland. I mean, it, it, it's such a wrong place. And I'm therefore fully behind the officer's recommendations and that we should refuse it and be consistent with what we've said last time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Thank you. Yes, I tend to agree with councillor Goodridge. And I fully appreciate the pleas that have been made by the local residents and the parish council. But the argument about leaving the postmistress to stay in the cabin after she's retired just brings on a call for the next postmistress to be looking for cheap accommodation. And I don't really understand, can we, can we go back a slide to the, the sort of? Yeah, I mean, if, if they're so desperate to, to provide accommodation for the postmistress, there is space there round the two buildings that they could tuck it in without tucking this postmistress away in the middle of a woods. So I, I would have thought we, we might be more sympathetic, or I would be more sympathetic, if it was, if it was closer to the existing built form. Unless I hear something to the contrary, I'm minded to go along with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other speakers? No. In that case, we'll move to the, to the recommendation. So the recommendation is that permission be refused for reasons one to three, as set out on page seventy-two of the report. Can I get all those in favours of that recommendation?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Item A5, land between four and five New Road, Hyde Stale, and proposal for erection of a detached dwelling. And it's, Jessica, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is for the erection of a detached dwelling sited on land between four and five New Road in Hyde Stale. On the screen now is a location plan to the left, which shows the infill site outlined in red, situated between five and four New Road. On the right-hand side is an aerial photo. This area of the site here is proposed for the new dwelling. So existing, proposed plans, because there's no existing, show a detached dwelling, one point five storeys in height. And this is the ground floor plan. Two parking spaces provided to the front of the dwelling with side access down each side. Bike storage and bin storage to the right-hand side. Kitchen, land being a room brand. And then upstairs is three bedrooms provided with a family bathroom. Proposed elevations, so projecting gable to the front with a point five-storey dormer located in the roof. This is a street scene elevation. You can see it's within keeping to the existing grain of development along the site. Some site photos. This is number four. Yeah, this is number four. This is number five, and this is the plot in between here. It's recently been felled from some vegetation that was towards the front of the site. So the site is located within the Green Belt. And the officer's recommendation is to refuse on principal grounds of the creation of a new dwelling inside the Green Belt would not conform with the MPPF. So, yeah, an in-principle objection. But there would be considerations for visual immunity, residential immunity and highways.
Two speakers, Maxine Long, speaking on behalf of Busbridge Parish Council.
Good evening, Mr Chairman and councillors. Busbridge Parish Council was somewhat surprised to see your officer's recommendation that this application be refused. Granted, the site, like many in Waverley, is in both the Green Belt and the Surrey Hills AONB. However, given the housing shortage in the borough, we would have thought that this is the sort of modest, low-impact development that should be encouraged. This site is an empty plot in the middle of the dozen or so houses that make up New Road, which itself is almost entirely surrounded by dense woodland. This development will therefore have no impact on the surrounding landscape. It is also well-sited when compared to many in Waverley, being only a ten-minute drive to the shops, railway and the A3 at Milford. This proposal is not for a house to be built in the applicant's garden. The site is entirely separate and has existed as a building plot since it was created by the original developer of New Road, before the houses on either side were first sold. This was over thirty years ago. We consider that this building will only improve the street scene in New Road as an attractive, relatively small house and ridding the road of a very obvious gap which could be mistaken for a bomb site. We are often told by your officers, usually in the case of an application going to appeal, but relevant, we think, in this case, that we must consider what harm does it do? The answer is very obviously, in this instance, none. So we ask that this application be granted.
Thank you. And Nick Codbold, excuse me.
Thank you, Chairman. It's an interesting one, this one, because it's so blatantly an, an application and a plot for development. I endorse everything that the parish council said, so I'm going to try and spell out a route towards getting permission granted here. Obviously, the recommendation is refusal and it's on principal grounds. It's not on any other, any other grounds. There's a lack of objections. In fact, there's support from the parish council, we've just heard. There's support from neighbouring properties all around New Road. So the question is, can Hyde Stale be classified as a village for the sake of applying the allowance of a limited infilling in villages, paragraph one four five of the MPPF? As officers have explained, this is a subjective judgment rather than one based on anything like settlement boundaries or similar. The report, the officer's report that is, explains that the assessment should be based on a matter of fact, on the ground, and as to whether it relates to an obvious village setting. I get that members won't want to set a precedent here in approving the scheme. But on the basis that there is widespread support here, I think we should explore how it can be done. I think there are two routes available to you to grant planning permission. The first is the obvious one, which I've just touched on, to say that Hyde Stale is a village. I don't think this really has implications beyond Hyde Stale because there's no definition in the MPPF of what is and isn't a village. If you concluded it is a village, then the proposed house is an obvious infilling within the village. Personally, I don't see this as a harmful precedent anywhere else because the site is unique. It's in a pocket of development tightly flanked on both sides by other houses. Wide in New Road, as you can see up there, is, dare I say, suburban in style rather than rural. It certainly isn't prevalent in the Waverley Green Belt. And it's more akin to, to an urban or village setting rather than the Green Belt countryside setting. In terms of setting precedent elsewhere in the village and away from the New Road area, the rest of the village is low-density. It's all big houses on large plots. So the rest, so therefore, any application for a new house on these plots wouldn't, wouldn't satisfy the test of limited infilling in the MPPF, a test which generally implies a tight plot between two houses on the street frontage. So I can't see that there's any comparable site in Hyde Stale, other than the New Road, where you would be setting a precedent. Second obvious route to an approval is the very special circumstances you touched on in other applications tonight, and whether there any exist. I can give you seven here. One, it's an obvious plot, probably as obvious as you'll ever get in the Green Belt. Two, its development will not materially affect the openness of the Green Belt. Three, the development will have no harmful impact on the countryside. Four, Waverley can't demonstrate its five-year land supply, so actually has a need for housing, especially in rural areas. And the courts have found that very special circumstances can extend to the need for housing. Five, there's strong local support, this is a material consideration. Six, the proposal is for a self-build dwelling, which is supported by the MPPF. And also, seven, supported by the MPPF again, is sustainability of the dwelling, including an electric charging point. So hopefully, you can take one of these routes as a way forward to approve an application on the site, which seems to me is ready for development and a sensible site for development. It's so well physically related to the existing settlement, there is no harm resulting, so I hope you can grant planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Remember, we should speak on this?
Thank you, Chairman. I've visited the site of this application on various occasions. And the imagery that always comes to mind when I look at the plot is one of a mouth with a missing tooth awaiting a crown. The report before us finds no planning issues with the design of the proposed infill property. The modest dwelling does the job of filling the gap nicely and I would suspect have sailed, and I would have suspected, would have sailed through the planning process, were it not in the Green Belt and outside of any formerly designated settlement area. There'd be no, as been, as been stated, there'd be no objections to this application and significant support from neighbours. So in the whole, the issue before us relates to the discussion set out at the bottom of the four paragraphs on page eighty-two of our papers. The Hyde Stale area is undoubtedly in the Green Belt and it doesn't have a designated settlement area. But if you actually look at the number of properties on or just off Hambledon Road and Salt Lane, most nicely set back from the road, you will find that there are actually nearly a hundred properties in an area of just over half a square kilometre. And then you can add to this, immediately behind the proposed site, the Hayden Hill Leonard Cheshire home with around fifty residents. So you can actually see, we're actually looking, although it's quite well disguised, we're looking at a fairly substantial settlement area. In terms of its setting in Busbridge Parish, there are actually no shops, no pubs and no places of worship outside of the very limited facilities at Winworth Arboretum and Hayden Hill. So noting that situation, the Hyde Stale area, including New Road, is as close to being a village as you're going to get in the Busbridge area. So I'm going to argue that the officer's absolutely literal interpretation of pop, e, the paragraph one four five of the MPF, doesn't actually accord with what we see on the ground. As has been pointed out, if you go through the MPPF, you can't actually find a definition of village. And I struggled to find any, well, I didn't find anything in the associated guidance either. So I believe what we're looking at is very limited infilling in a village setting and that this application should thus, thus be approved. Choice before us this evening is between the literal interpretation, which Choice before us this evening is between the literal interpretation, which will leave New Road with its unsightly cavity, which no one appears to want, or a decision to approve based on the reality that the Hyde Stale area does actually constitute a settlement, albeit, albeit not a formalised one. But if we make that acceptance, then the MPPF requirements are thus met. And my interpretation is for the second of these choices. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Freyshewski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I think the application before us is a very good one and the report is a very good one. The officers have followed the rules to the absolute maximum, but on this occasion, I think this application site makes perfect, perfect sense and it demonstrates the very special circumstances that have been so eloquently put forward by the speakers. Yes, it is a matter of judgment and on balance, I believe in this particular case that the officer's recommendation is wrong and we have enough evidence to support what has been said and this seems like an appropriate, very sensible application in the right place and I think that we should be looking at the application recommendation and instead of refusing, we should be granting permission. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Townsend.
I'm afraid I couldn't probably disagree more. This isn't designated as settlement and if we actually approve this, this is creating a precedent undoubtedly. Our local plan talks about settlement boundaries, sets settlement boundaries, we know where the, our plans, our policies apply within settlement boundaries. We are actually talking about, as much as, you know, it looks like a nice development, the actual design of it, we are actually talking about putting this outside of a settlement. There will be then nothing to stop any other application coming forward, putting houses outside a settlement boundary. The tests for exceptional circumstances haven't been proved, so therefore we are contravening not only our local plan policies but also national planning policy as well.
Councillor Goodridge.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I, I wouldn't like to declare that this is a settlement because I think that is dangerous and, and could be used as a precedent for applications around Hyde Stale in the future. On the other hand, I want to pass this and therefore one is looking for whether, particularly the speaker, the second speaker, as to whether the special circumstances outlined by him, which would and I'd ask advice from the officers, whether that could be accepted as special circumstances because I think this is a unique site from anywhere else in that we have a, we have a building plot that has been a building plot for 30, 20 years, 20, 30 years, undeveloped and would actually be attractive in the street scene and is wanted by one and all. It's pretty rare to have a parish council and the neighbours all wanting something when the officers are saying it's contrary to the rules. I would like to pass it, but I would like officers' advice as to the better course if there is one.
Chris, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. The, the issue of very special circumstances is very much one for you to make a judgement on. That's the point of very special circumstances. The position as laid out in the report is extremely clear with regard to the designation of the area and the settlement issue, but the very special circumstances tests, as have been, as have been explained, are yours to determine.
Councillor Howard.
I was just going to ask a question, sort of following on from Councillor Townsend, about how much damage legally do you feel that is to the, to the Green Belt legislation if we keep overturning what is clear policy? So, and this idea of setting precedent, so, you know, as Councillor Townsend was saying, it's not within the boundary, so we're undermining our own rules here and so I'm, I'm nervous about overturning the officer's recommendation and then undermining our own, our own plan, Waverley plan.
If I may comment, Chairman. The issue with regard to very special circumstances is that there is no precedent. Decisions are made on the merits of the case in front of you. So basically, you can make the decision that it is very special circumstances, it has no further bearing on any other applications.
Councillor Deans.
This is a really strange one because I would love to find the reasons to actually let this happen and I think what Councillor Zuberon said was, you know, very true. There's a gap there that should have a house, but we have policies and we have exceptions where we say they're so special that overturn those. And as much as I really want to hear what those could be, I haven't heard anything which overturns it, which is a real shame because I really think that a house should go there, but the policies don't allow us. And, you know, in previous applications, we've said this contravenes policies and I feel we should be consistent, I feel I should be. If I'm always saying you're breaching the policy and I want you to refuse something, then if I haven't got special circumstances, I don't think morally I can say, yes, well, do it on this occasion. As much as I'd like it to happen, I don't think it exists. I'm sorry.
Councillor Freyshewski, please.
I will be brief. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. I've sat in this chamber for a long time and, and I've seen applications come before us where they've, we've had policies which have said that is not allowed and they've been absolutely overturned on matters of very special circumstances. And I think here it's very obvious, yes, we're going against our own policy, but as already said, it is a matter of judgment and balance for us to make here this evening. When we look at some of the exception sites and the exception fields that have been destroyed over the last few years, I mean, this, this just makes the whole system a mockery. There is an opportunity here, it's got good support, the parish council support it, it's an obvious site, one single dwelling in that gap, like putting a tooth back, will, will, it will suffice. And I think the very special circumstances here is that the site is obvious. I go back to the point I'm making, it's a matter of judgment for us and on balance, I believe the, the decision to refuse is wrong. And, and I, I just think, yes, we don't, don't take the letter to the law, there are circumstances where things can be done differently because the situation allows it to be and I think this is an obvious site for that to happen.
For my own part, the rule of unintended consequences applies here. If we start, this is an obvious housing site, but I think that there are many obvious housing sites around the villages, these small villages or these settlements outside village boundaries. And we'd just be inviting developers to go around and identify those sites and then arrange for applications. So, and I don't think there's any special circumstances, it's, it's an obvious housing site, but there's nothing special about it, it's just a housing site. So on this occasion, I, I don't think, I've not heard a case made to, to overturn the recommendation.
Mr Chairman, if, if I could just add, paragraph 144 of the MPPF makes clear, when considering any planning application, local planning authorities should ensure that substantial weight given to any harm to the Green Belt, very special circumstances will not exist unless the potential harm to the Green Belt and any other harm resulting from the proposal is clearly outweighed by the considerations. So you've got to be clear here that the very special circumstances test is made out.
Yeah.
Just supporting you.
Yes.
What's been said already.
Thank you. Can we try and move to conclusion, Councillor Darcy?
This is hopefully a bit quick. Paragraph 145 G, it says limited infilling of the, or the partial or complete redevelopment of previously developed land, et cetera, et cetera, is allowed. So wouldn't you argue that this is previously developed land and this is just limited infilling of that previously developed land?
No, it's greenfield, yeah.
Why not? Well, all the other houses are. What are they?
Branfield is very clear defined and this is not, this is not it. Right, can we move to a conclusion? Right, so the recommendation is that the permission be refused for the reason set out on page 86 of the report. All those in favour of it being refused, please?
It's five, Chairman.
All those against?
It's four, Chairman.
Any sort of abstentions?
Two, Chairman.
Okay, so that's a recommendation's being agreed. Okay, thank you. Right, so we move on to item 7.7, sorry, yeah, item B1, Land at Queen's Way, Cranley. So that's Jessica.
Thank you, Chair. So this application was brought before the committee, two committees ago, and was deferred, requiring further information regarding the extent of the infrastructure and cabling already implemented, the capability of providing further electric vehicle charging points in the future and the restriction of the parking bays for public, for the public or for tenants. So the application has been approved and this is to vary a condition relating to the provision of the electric vehicle charging points on the site, which were required in addition to the approved scheme for parking bays. So this is the approved scheme and the application condition required two bays to be provided around this area with electric vehicle charging points. Subsequently, it's been, there's a, there's a council-wide, because this is council-owned land, there's a council-wide kind of need for a strategy regarding electric vehicle charging points. So this condition has been sought to be varied to allow for the infrastructure to be implemented but for the charging points to not be implemented until there's a borough-wide strategy. So it's seeking an extension for one year to allow for that information to be provided. Further information's been provided, say, which states that the parking bays have been implemented but the infrastructure has not yet, but it's very easily implemented and the applicant is willing to put that in as and when. They will be capped off and then within a year, there'll be a borough-wide strategy to provide electric vehicle charging points. The bays at this time will be unrestricted, so they'll be for the use of the public and the tenants, but as soon as the strategy and the electric vehicle charging points are implemented, they would be for the use of the tenants. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. This was extensively discussed a few kilometers ago, I wasn't present and it was, there was further information requested, so perhaps we can keep our comments with regard to whether the further information is adequate. Anyone wish to comment on this? Excuse me, Councillor Darcy.
It was only really to ask, if you're going to restrict the parking later but not earlier, wouldn't that just cause a problem? Wouldn't it be easy to restrict it from the beginning?
Yes, Jessica.
So we, we could restrict the parking but there would be no advantage in that because there'd be no electric vehicle charging points, so it would be to restrict them for no purpose at this time.
People get used to parking in spaces and then they, they get cross when you change the designation, it just causes a headache later down, down the line.
I think the problem was you effectively would have to enforce that for someone who's parking in a space where there's no electric parking, parking, parking spot. These restrictions will have to be enforced, you know, when the, when the electric sockets are in place, like by ticketing or something. And so you'd be taking somebody, somebody for no obvious reason, I think, I think it's a legal issue on that, but.
Sorry, by way of verbal update, and I should have included this as a written update, the Housing Department have requested that the amended condition is amended, suggested amended condition is amended to read, two of the available car park spaces are to be provided with a fast charge socket to be installed, which shall thereafter be, be installed, hold on, thereafter be operational, to become operational within one year of this decision noticed in accordance with the scheme to be submitted and approved in writing by the local planning authority. Oh, is it that? Actually, sorry. Ah, it's, it's actually, the amendment is actually in the written up B1. So the housing team have asked for that amendment just to really clarify that it can be used before then. And also, they, just to clarify that they are in discussions with a service level provider in order to bring electric vehicle charging points forward with it, within that times, timescale and they're very clear about that. And there's, there's no sort of obvious intention not to do so.
Councillor Else.
Thank you. Just a couple of observations or questions really. Have the Housing Department apologised for not complying with the planning condition that was imposed on their planning permission? And B, have they been reminded that planning conditions apply to them the same as they apply to the general public?
Yes, and yes, and I think, I think also from the planning perspective, we, we, we are clear now that when we impose conditions of this nature, but both in relation to housing land and on the public highway, that unfortunately, the, the County Council haven't also got vehicle charging point contracts in place in order to bring forward that infrastructure at the minute. They are looking at it and everybody is very aware that this is, 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 is really, should be a priority and it is a priority, but we, we and the planning team are also conscious that when, when we said, when we have conditions of this nature, the wording of it needs to be appropriate in order to, to meet circumstances at the time of the condition being placed on us.
Any other points from members? Okay, so the recommendation that subject to conditions, one, looking at the revised version, subject conditions one to four in the agenda of report and amended condition five at above in the amendment permission be, be granted. All those in favour, please, show. Any against?
It's unanimous, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we're almost there. So there are no matters requiring exclusion of the press and public and I presume there's no legal advice. No, in that case, Patrick, sorry.
I'd just like to say a big thank you to Laura, this will be her last committee presentation and we'd all like to thank her for her, for her time and her efforts throughout, throughout the period at Waverley Borough Council. On behalf of the members.
Thank you.